Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to our first meeting on the budget for 2023. Just to clarify for, especially for members of council returning, and maybe members of the public, you may notice that, so this is not a budget committee meeting. We did not appoint a committee this year since we realized that all members of council were on the committee. So we didn't need the extra step of a committee making recommendations to council and then council approving the recommendation of the committee since it's the exact same group of people. So tonight, essentially, it's a special meeting of council, but it's not a committee meeting. So in other words, we're in a position to pass resolutions if we wish to. We're not a committee making recommendations to council. So I just wanted to clarify that because it is a little bit different than the previous years. And but to start the process, we don't have to pass, just because we can, we don't have to pass resolutions this evening. This evening, the main point is about information and our opportunity to clarify, ask questions, and make sure we feel well informed, equipped. If we want to go back and consult with constituents and so that we can then at our next meeting, if we wish, then give direction to staff. So there's no need for this evening to to give any specific directions or pass any resolutions. Any questions on process then? We're good to go. So as far as our regular agenda, so disclosure of pecuniary interest. Seeing none. We're not going to approve minutes this evening. We'll do that at our regular meeting tomorrow. And so we can proceed with the reports from the star of the night, the director of finance treasurer, Adam Boylan, over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm pleased to present the 2023 draft budget for your consideration tonight. Thank you. This year's budget is one that accomplishes quite a lot from addressing extraordinary inflation to phasing in our PILs to funding key service enhancements such as bylaw enforcement. There is much to consider this year. Despite all these challenges, we're able to recommend a 2.94 tax rate increase equating to a $51 increase on a $250,000 residential property. This does compare favorably to our other lower tier comparators who are projected on average to increase their rates by 4.41%. The county did just pass their budget in principle, I believe. So when considering the blended tax rate, which includes the county and educational portion of property taxes, we're at 1.1 percentage point higher at 2.95%, which equates to $111 increase to a $250,000 residential property. So I have detailed a presentation with further walks council through the story of how we went from originally a 10.32% increase to the 2.94 that's being tabled tonight. Okay, so we have special council meetings set for today, Tuesday, next Thursday, and the Tuesday thereafter. The time it takes to deliberate the budget can vary from year to year. So council may choose to add meetings or cancel meetings at their discretion. We've had the budget published on the township's website since February 14th. We received some positive commentary, but very few inquiries since this time. So my hope is the budget document itself was informative. So for day to for today, we'll be providing a overview of the 2023 draft budget. We will then open things up for questions, comments, and discussions, or even requests for revision. We will then have community grant requests that will require council approval later. These can be pushed to the next meeting if time doesn't permit. And then going through next Tuesday, we'll have a presentation from our asset management analyst Talia Jones, who will be providing an asset management orientation and update. And then we'll we'll provide a brief presentation on the township's capital budget, including some of the CC capital items. We've got some housekeeping to do in that area. And lastly, our last two meetings will be to cover items for follow up for administration and then finalize the the budget and and report on what the final impact to taxpayers will be based on the draft budget plus minus any revisions. So from a legislative lens, council is really looking to achieve these objectives over the course of of the budget. We must adopt estimates of all sums required during the coming year for the purposes of the municipality according to the municipal act. So we'll do that through a budget bylaw when the time comes to pass one. We need to get our user fee bylaw passed. And we need to pass a tax rates bylaw. So as as Mayor Gare mentioned, none of that is going to be passed tonight. Just an information session will bring for those bylaws at a later date once the budget's finalized. Okay, so getting into the actual budget, our budget is divided into three interconnected sections, operating capital and reserves. So the operating budget is it plans for the day to day operations of the township, including salaries, materials, supplies that are necessary to deliver programs and services. Our capital budget is the annualized plan for the financing of the town's infrastructure and it includes other special projects. So some example of capital, roads, bridges, land, machinery, and equipment. And reserves funding set aside through operating budget contributions for specific purposes defined by council legislation or agreements. Today's focus is on the operating budget, though I will discuss the township's reserves at a high level as well. Okay, so the budget book takes some time to discuss how the township's services are funded. Explanations are provided on property taxes, government transfers, and user fees. These combined account for 90% of the township's total funding. The municipal act does greatly restrict what municipalities are able to charge. So we're not able to charge, for example, sales tax, just like upper levels of government do. So this is really what we're working with. Property taxes account for about half of the township's funding. This figure can vary from municipality to municipality, particularly depending on the size of a water sewer base in the municipality. Because those are most commonly charged user fees. Government transfers, including an agreement with county to maintain their roads, accounts for a quarter of the township's funding and user fees amount to 16% of our funding. We've really been honing in on this area during 2022, and I'll talk a bit about that later. Local improvements such as Drainage Act charges, development charges, payments in lieu, and other sources like interest and penalties on taxes account for a combined 10% of the township's funding. So going into property taxes, the budget book does greatly expand on how property taxes work and almost serves as a mini orientation for council. That was the intent of it anyway. I'm just going to cover some highlights that I think are important. So really, when we're deliberating that township's budget, we're talking about that blue wedge. It represents 48% of all taxes paid within the township. That's what we have control over. The remaining 52% is remitted to the county of Algon and the province to the school boards. I've got a budget restriction here. So an important restriction of the municipal act is that we are required to present a balanced budget, meaning revenues must equal expenses. So in contrast, upper levels of government, they can budget deficit budgets. They can spend more than they bring in. We are not able to do that. We are not able to borrow from the bank to cover an operating deficit. So that means when we have a new expenditure being added into the budget, if we don't have an offsetting non-property tax revenue source, it hits the property tax levy. That's how that works. So property tax levy is the default funding mechanism for any new expenditures added to the budget. Okay. But this is really our starting point. This was 2022's budget approval. When looking at our property taxes, based on a $250,000 assessment, an average residential property would pay $3,769 in Malheith unless you're in Springfield, in which case you pay $3,878 for the same property due to our special area levy for streetlights and sidewalks. This is considered a middle of the road tax burden among our peers in the accounting, and I presented a graphic there of how we compare against the other lower tiers. When accounting for differences in tax burden, the budget appropriately focus on what we do. So the the decision making, the service level, the legislative requirements, but it's really only half of the story when we talk about affordability. There's this element of what we are that perhaps we don't talk about as much. So I thought the best way to explain what we are, or more accurately, maybe how we're built, is to go into how our tax base is composed. So here is a graphical representation of our tax base. Farmland does account for 49% and residential properties account for 42%. So a combined 91% of our tax base. In the budget book, I do write about the the taxation power of different tax classes based on what what are referred to property tax ratios, which are set by the county of Algon through policy. So ratios represent the amount of taxation a class receives in relation to a residential class. So if you look at the table, commercial properties are 1.637 times more effective at generating tax revenue than residential properties. Industrial properties are 2.2251 times more effective and so on. So assessment bases with a lot of assessment above a ratio of one can create a downward pressure on tax rates. So a lot of commercial and this is kind of common sense, but a lot of commercial and industrial assessment has a reduction on the the pressure on tax rates. Assessment basis with a lot of assessment below a ratio of one generally create an upward pressure on residential tax rates. So the township does have predominantly farmland assessment. By far, the most in the county actually, which does put pressure on the tax burdens of other classes. Farmland property undoubtedly receives for fewer services than residential properties, which justifies a lower tax burden. The difficulty with farmland properties that we still run roads along them, which are the township's most significant cost. The county reduced the farmland tax ratio a few years ago from 0.25 to 0.23, which generally I agree with. It's favorable for the township from the perspective that the county's tax levy shifted from to to less farmland dominant lower tier municipalities. We don't have any multi-residential or landfill assessment. I've included the ratio in particular for landfill because it does explain how we compare against one of the lower tiers. And I'll show you that here. So Southwood's the one with the landfill, and that's why they have, they're considered to have the strongest assessment base. This is actually pre-Amazon. I'll mention, as far as I know, this is pre-Amazon, so the the rich get richer. But they have a landfill within their municipality, so. So this is how the strength of the township's assessment base compares to other lower tiers. Again, it's a it's a middle of the road tax burden for a middle of the road assessment base. That that's not just a coincidence. In comparing to the other lower tiers, our assessment base has kind of a lot of things oddly, which averages us, I would, in terms of assessment based strength. So we're we're we have the second most residential assessment. We're a distant second behind central organ. But we're we have the most in commercial assessment, though it is extremely top heavy in the police college. We're a close second to Elmer in industrial assessment, which grew by 29% in 2022. That was in relation to Gunther, Inc., Misty Glen Creamery, Berkelman's welding, and a tax class change against the Canham property. And we have the most pipeline assessment, which caused us issues in the past to do a series of assessment appeals. And in case there's any doubt, Malheith is firing away the greenest municipality in the region with nearly a billion dollars in farmland assessment, which is nearly double the next closest in the county, as well as the highest managed forest assessment. Okay, so going into user fees, we use these to target where specific beneficiaries can be identified, non-users can be excluded, and the quantity of service can be consumed. The quintessential example for these are water and sewer. So payments made on water and sewer bills are used exclusively to fund those services. They do not subsidize property tax services or vice versa. An example of a property tax funded service are roads. We can effectively monitor who or when someone is using a road. So these costs are paid for by the general tax base. So we have a status of for our different fee categories here. So so we recently did a water and wastewater rate study. That's done. So we've got a projection for the next 10 years of rates. We're in the process of finalizing a building and planning rate study, which will come to council later in 2023. We did some internal reviews on public works and on corporate user fees with minimal changes. Animal control, dog dog tag fees were reduced by council late 2022 to remove subsidization issue where user fees were exceeding the cost to actually provide the service. Chief Spore brought forward the fire recoveries recently, which council passed. So we have new recoveries for those. And I've got a couple of recommendations at the bottom. This isn't in the budget book. This is just a little something I added for flavor. But I do think community buildings is an area that we need to do some work on a user fees, as well as potentially bylaw enforcement. Now that, and we'll talk a bit more about bylaw enforcement later, but it is being enhanced through this budget, and it leaves the question, how much of that cost can we recover through future fees? So I think that's something to keep in mind. Grants and government transfers. I detail each of these in the budget document, so I'll just highlight the change. The Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund is an unrestricted operating grant. This is increasing by 3.767% or $30,700. The formula for the grant is primarily tied to weighted assessment per household, which we've talked about, and average household income, which is also included in the budget book. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund is decreasing by 10%. So the province rolled out a new funding formula that calculates entitlement based on asset replacement value as opposed to historical accounting information. We're reviewing the outcome of this. It's somewhat surprising to us in a year where we're really feeling some cost pressures that they would cut funding like this for any municipality. So we're still digging into what we can do about that. Canada Community Benefit Fund, this is the former federal gas tax, is increasing by 4.35%. This is another primary capital budget funding source that we'll talk about on Tuesday. And lastly, yeah, so the township has an agreement with the county to maintain the roads in exchange for transfer payments intended to offset the cost. This amount increases by inflation each year. The township does have a counting roads reserve, which is used to store excess funding for future use. As at the end of 2022, we're in a small deficit position. This means that the township had to borrow a little bit of its funding to to complete county work. So there may be a concern that roads maintenance funding is not kept up with the associated costs. And and there's a concern that the township will continue to find itself in a further deficit if the funding isn't aligning with the costs. So that's something that we're looking into. I know Matt and I have talked about it. We don't have answers yet, but it's definitely something we're keeping our eyes on. Okay, staff, we we also apply for one-time grants, so I included some of these just for councils review. We also receive many smaller ones that are not listed. Another for flavor item, so I put some recommendations about how the township can position for grants, which I I thought is useful for us given our financial constraints. So in my opinion, these are the most important things for positioning for future grant opportunities. Shovel ready projects, we've talked about this before, where sometimes we want to do a study for a project, just so we have some something ready for the province to consider. Even if it's something that we can't afford without grant assistance, it can be helpful to have a study ready that kind of backs up our case to the province for why they should provide us funding. Alignment with provincial and federal objectives is a really big one. They own the the province and federal government only release grant opportunities for things that they want to to promote. So alignment with those objectives is really helpful. But one we've heard tossed around is energy savings and facilities. It's a very trendy one right now, for example. Cooperation with neighboring municipalities and conservation authorities are doing joint joint applications are generally favored by the province especially. Frequent serving of grant opportunities, so just keeping our eyes open. There's a lot of different ones that can come from different sources and staff prioritization of grant applications. So that refers to when we do have a grant application, we really want to put our best foot forward, which takes time. It takes multiple players to write a good grant application so that it it does take a bit of staff time. And sometimes we have to put push other things aside when a good opportunity comes along. Asset management planning through our asset management plan and lobbying regional representatives as well. Okay, so getting into the proposed changes in the 2023 budget, we are recommending additional property taxes in the amount of 398,400. If approved, this our property tax levy would increase by 5.03%. When factoring in assessment growth, the township's tax rates would increase by 2.94. So yeah, so here I've provided comparison to the other lower tiers. This information may be dated. This was done through an internal poll among township treasures. I haven't kept up with all the different changes that councils may or may not have made. But this is information that was brought forward for those municipalities that very recently. So I mentioned at the at the start of the presentation, if approved, a $250,000 residential property would pay an additional $51 annually or $4.25 each month. A point of clarification here is on the garbage levy. So it's that we have a $50 waste management fee on our property tax bill. This is not recommended to change for 2023, which I will go in a bit about later. But for clarity, this is not technically a property taxes. It is a user fee. So when I say property taxes are going up 2.94%, that does exclude any impact of our garbage levy. So when we do factor in the garbage levy, we're at a 2.84%. I hope that's clear. I know that's caused some confusion in the past. So for blended tax burden, meaning the inclusion of county and education portion of property taxes, we're estimating a 2.95, which is $111 increase per $250,000 residential property. This is based on a county rate increase of 3.76. This also is inclusive of the garbage fee I mentioned. As we know, taxation is based on current value assessment multiplied by your tax rate. So property owners with assessments higher than 250,000 will pay more. I think that goes without saying, but I just want to make sure that's clear. So for each $100,000 in assessment, a residential property will pay an additional for for $44.44 and a farmland property will pay $10.22, which is 23% of the increase on residential properties.
Adam, can we pause just for a minute and just see if there are any questions at this point? Counselor Serna?
You you were talking about the county tax rate. And and you mentioned, what was it, three point something?
Yep, so I've got it up there. They I'm told a 3.76% is the tax rate increase.
I thought they announced a rate of a little over 2%. So they announced 2% and then they're telling me it's 3.76. And somebody explain that to me, please.
Just to clarify the word announced, I think what was the first draft budget that was taken to the public for consultation and input was 2.07. And based on feedback from the public, there was a decision to not use all of the surplus towards the tax levy, but to the tax rate, but to split it and put some in reserves and some towards the tax rate. So it did bump it to 376, and that's as of just yesterday.
Now, the other the other question I have is I heard that the county of Algon tax rate is one of the highest in Ontario. I I don't know. I I somebody told me that they were probably in the top five for for taxation. We should look at that because if they're spending that kind of money, and I just noticed they're taking 48% of our budget or our taxation. We get 42, they get 48, and we're running a deficit on on roads and stuff. Something doesn't quite sound right to me.
Yeah, and just to be clear, there are two separate budgets, so they're not taking money from our budgets. We we collect on their behalf. So they have their own budget.
Right.
We have our own budget. We're the collectors. So just
We're not collecting enough to cover our costs. According to that, correct?
We're in a very slight deficit of $2,000. So our spending on county roads does fluctuate year to year, mostly because of winter control. Like if it's a bad winter, we'll spend more money.
Right.
It's not, but yeah, this is the first year in a while that we are in a deficit position. And from what I can tell, normally we fared better than some of the other lower tiers. We've had a positive reserve balance, and that's been drawn upon over the last two years, which isn't surprising, given the increase in commodity costs in that area.
Thank you.
And I should clarify, so the this is a is an agreement that is signed between Malheith, and so it's not that they're taking from our budget. It's an agreement. And there is the understanding that some years, there's a bit of a guess guessing game, and some years will be above, some some years will be below. That agreement was reviewed thoroughly, I think, just last year because it is causing an issue for for each municipality. It's a difficult one to manage, and it is undergoing further review because there there is a there's room for improvement. So it is something that is being looked at across the the county. So to ensure that it's not the intent, I mean, of anyone, including the county, to to be unfair and to have one municipality, you know, providing more service than they're being paid for, for sure. So it's, but it's not an easy program to to manage.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gare. Just to you, Rick. The county actually has a real deficit too, and that's one of the reasons we kind of increased this a bit. We put out two big projects. We probably should be doing them, but we just decided not to. But we took, we had a $550,000 savings from one of the roundabouts came in cheaper. So we use some of that money towards the budget and some not towards savings. But in long-term care homes, I mean, they're expensive. County has, till I got on, I had no idea the amount of money that goes through that place, but it's an expensive proposition, and there's lots of things that we have to spend money on, so. I think the budget is good. It could have been a lot worse. There was talk of seven and whatever it was that we kept it down to that. So it might bite us in the ear, but that's what we kept it to, so.
Deputy Mayor. Be careful. Careful, you'll you'll pay for that. Are we okay to continue then? Over to you, Adam. Thank you.
I'll try to look for hands if there's any future questions.
No worries. That's my job.
Where were we? Right, okay. So allocation of tax dollars, we talked about how the county of Algon gets the 42%, province of Ontario gets 10, Malheith's at 48, and with that 48, we spend 48 on public works. We spend 23% on emergency services like fire and police. We spend 10% on parks, wrecks, recreation and cemeteries, 4% on waste management, 2% on development services, and then 13% on governance and administration, although that does include conservation. So of the $398,400 that we're we're raising, this is a breakdown by service area. So the focus on this year's budget is on ensuring our infrastructure is properly financed when accounting for inflationary pressures. So this is, that's reflective in the public works and debt and reserves, as well as resourcing development services, of which half of the increase there is related to bylaw enforcement service enhancement. So I will go into a full summary of the breakdown that 398,400. Okay, but first, at the heart of budgeting this year was inflation, right? So inflation measures how much more expensive goods and services are over a certain period. The Consumer Price Index is a way to measure inflation by. So CPI increased by 6.8%, while the non-residential construction price index, which closely represents pricing on township's capital projects, increased by 19.5%. So when budgeting for this, we do consider a few different things. I've got them listed here. CPI is a useful benchmark for general affordability of goods and services, but not, it's not instructive as to how the levy's set. CPI represents the full basket of goods. Municipality is only concerned with the cost of goods it actually purchases. For example, included CPI are price increases in relation to food and housing. We are not purchasers of For example, included CPI are price increases in relation to food and housing. We are not purchasers of food and housing. Some of the townships' multi-year contracts are stipulated to increase by CPI, the main one being our garbage collection contract. So in that sense, it directly impacts our budget. And some of the township's costs have increased by much less than general CPI, like wages, and others have increased by more, like gravel. So when accounting for inflation staff really just had to look at potential cost increases increases in relation to specific line items and the adequacy of the existing budgets to absorb any cost increases. We aren't in the habit of blindly increasing budget lines by a flat CPI amount unless the contract stipulates that we do so. We do tend to budget a bit more aggressively, knowing we have established a contingency reserve to handle any potential cost overruns. In the past, the contingency reserve was relatively dormant, and budgets seemed to be more padded as a sort of risk management strategy. So as long as council continues to fund its reserves adequately, our new form of budgeting makes departments more accountable and helps keep tax increases comparatively lower. And you'll note here on the on the graphic, for the second year in a row, our levy increase is lower than inflation. This can be explained by the high number of budget cuts we've made over the last two years, as well as a significant amount of our costs are related to wages. About thirty percent of our costs are related to wages, which have increased by one point five percent. So this is the big one. This is really the story of what we did with the budget this year. And it's, it is the most crucial part of the budget document. Each of these items is discussed in further detail in the actual budget book, but I'll spend a little bit more time providing a brief overview. And then we'll go into depth on a few of the items that I want to highlight for council. So starting with our budget pressures, these were items that we felt really, we didn't have much control over. Circumstances dictated we increased budgets in these areas. They include our payment and lose sharing with county for a hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred. Adjustments to existing and wages for a hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred. Road maintenance costs of a hundred and twenty thousand. Capital funding, so these are property tax contributions toward our capital budget, which we'll cover more on on Tuesday for seventy thousand. Inflationary increases stipulated in our garbage collection contract with Miller Waste for forty-four thousand nine hundred. An insurance premium increase of twenty-two percent equating to thirty-five thousand dollars. Budget adjustments for fleet operations and for repairs and maintenance and fuel for twenty thousand. The dog tag fee reduction I mentioned for twenty-four thousand. Concert conservation levy increases, so that's Long Point, Kettle Creek and Catfish Creek for a combined fourteen thousand. And then the last item is just a representation of many different line items that went up and down that aggregated to seventy-two hundred. So when we get to this point, we were at a eight point three seven levy increase with levy requirements totaling six hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred. This is the section where we felt the effects of inflation the most and became somewhat pessimistic of the outcome of the budget. From there, we had service enhancements. So a net levy impact to establish a shared building and planning service with BAM came in at sixty-nine thousand eight hundred. Bylaw enforcement service enhancements, where we see our investment in bylaw services increase from a mere sixty-five hundred to sixty-five thousand this year. Port Bruce Icebreaking, we have that new tender come through that we approved for the dragline, so that was an additional cost of twelve thousand. And a expansion of yard waste collection service to Copenhagen and Lyons for combined cost of fourteen thousand. So that added another a hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred, which pushed our tax levy increase to ten point three two percent. But we also had quite a few significant reductions to our property tax levy, starting with the change in legislation that pushed the responsibility of recycling upon producers. So we entered into agreement with CMO, so we're still we're under contract with Miller Waste to for them to continue their recycling services, but we're receiving recoveries from CMO now to offset our costs. So that's coming in at the negative ninety-two thousand five hundred. As mentioned earlier, Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund did increase by thirty thousand seven hundred. Chief Spores' work on the motor vehicle collision recoveries is expected to save general taxpayers forty thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-three. Planning. Excuse me, planning approvals moving closer to full cost recovery through updates to our planning fees later this year are expected to be sixteen thousand seven hundred. And internal reorganizations, including the outsourcing of the township's IT function and consolidation of payroll and human resources for a combined annual savings of a hundred forty thousand five hundred. We're also using ninety-eight thousand of our contingency reserve to phase in the impact of the payment and loose sharing changes equally over two years. How that works is presented on page nineteen of the budget. So these reductions totaled four hundred eighteen thousand four hundred, which pushed our levy requirement down to the increase of three hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred, which is our final draft figure for council's consideration. When we factor in assessment growth, which carried, which was carried by industrial assessment growth during two thousand and twenty-two, we end up at our proposed rate increase of two point nine four percent. So that's the summary of my story. A few of the highlights I want to go through. So, yeah, I wanted to highlight the organizational changes we made during two thousand and twenty-two because I really think it ended up benefiting taxpayers. We were funding improvements to our building, planning and bylaw services, of which the latter has been somewhat of a pain point for the township by finding savings in our corporate overhead through the outsourcing of IT and consolidating of human resources with payroll. So after all these changes, we're still projected to save twenty-eight thousand nine hundred. So we we saved money and we're going to be offering stronger services and building, planning and bylaw. So that is a pretty smart set of moves. Municipalities do often get criticized for just automatically piling on costs to levy rather than looking for alternative funding sources. So I think what we've done here is is pretty good, and we'll continue to look for opportunities for to become more financially efficient. So for wages, our pay grids are increasing by one point five percent. So that's council. Although we did, we did have a council bump up prior to the election for the, I think, five hundred dollars flat for each position, non-union and QP and Firepoint's paying. So other factors affecting wage costs include employee progression towards job rate. So you don't start at your your final salary. You have to prove that you're you're performing adequately, and then you gradually move up to your job rate. Manded changes to statutory benefits and then increased premiums for group health benefits, and that increased mainly due to inflation. So I do have a couple of notes here for to make council aware of a couple of things. We have our collective agreement with QP ending in two thousand and twenty-three, so that's going to be a big budget item for two thousand and twenty-four. I'm also recommending we review our compensation policy for inflationary adjustments to pay grids for the next year in light of the current economic circumstances. So inflation's been quite high, but we've held at one point five percent. I think that's a policy that's worth at least looking at. And to my knowledge, I don't believe we have an official non-union policy in place. Insurance premiums are increasing by twenty-two percent. Not a great year for us. As with prior years, Ontario's joint and several liability system is still a primary cause of the high cost of municipal insurance. Inflation has really impacted insurance premiums as insurance companies protect themselves against potentially costlier property claims. Also, the township's recent covered losses for damage in relation to a rescue vehicle during the Port Bruce flood and at the South Public Works Hall, there was some minor fire damage. So another recommendation here, we've been with Marsh Canada since two thousand and nineteen. That's our insurance provider. I'm going to recommend that we retender for two thousand and twenty-four to test market prices. We do typically retender every five years anyway, so. Lastly, we have our, these are some other taxpayer costs that are really unavoidable, so I thought we should really have council pay attention to what we're doing with them. So we have our special area levies for streetlights and sidewalks for Springfield. So that costs an average resident a hundred and nine dollars per year. Avon Drive pays the streetlights at forty-six dollars per year for an average property. So part of this cost is to build reserves for replacement of infrastructure. The adequacy of the amounts being transferred to the reserve does need to be reviewed through our asset management plan. But for two thousand and twenty-three, we have no changes being recommended. The existing levies are adequate in covering operating costs. The garbage levy and bag tag fees are staying the same. We we want to, we want garbage collection to be funded sixty percent from property taxes and forty percent from garbage levy and bag tag fees. That was a target endorsed by council through the two thousand and nineteen Waste Management Master Plan. So we were currently around fifty percent property tax funded, so we're going to just freeze the garbage levy until we're at that sixty percent. Random control, we switch from Saint Thomas to Hillside Kennels, which saved us seventy-two hundred dollars annually, as well as a one-time capital contribution of seventy-nine thousand five hundred. Dog tag fees were cut by fifty percent to bring revenues in line with expected costs going forward. So page eighty has a list of our reserves in the budget book. I've written about what each reserve is used for and where the the source comes from, so I won't retread that ground. But the main ones I want to bring to council's attention are the contingency reserve and the capital reserve next Tuesday. I should also note that council does have full ability to create its own set of reserves at its discretion. So if you feel that there's some sort of special funding target that you want to set, by all means, we can pass a resolution to get a new reserve created. This is a projection of where our reserves are headed if the budget passes as it's presented. So it is a net reduction of nearly eight hundred thousand dollars, of which three hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred is to fund projects carried over for two thousand and twenty-two. We will talk about that on Tuesday, but that is money that it was, the funding was raised in prior years. It was put in reserves, and it just hasn't been spent yet. The projects were approved, but it hasn't been spent. About four hundred and ten thousand is being drawn down due to our two thousand and twenty-three capital project set exceeding our annual capital funding contributions. And then we have net contingency draws of seventy-five thousand eight hundred. So that's the ninety-eight thousand for PIL phase-ins and a budget less budget contribution of thirty-four thousand two hundred. And then other changes in reserves equate for eighty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollar increase. That's primarily in the obligatory reserve section, like development charges.
Adam, can we both pause here for a second? Counselor Wilson, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Yeah, because we will go back to capital, specifically capital discussions at our next meeting. Is that, okay? So you'll remember till Tuesday? Well, we can take it now if you'd like. It's up to you.
That's right. To you, Madam Mayor. It was just reading through the stuff. If if we don't do something about our reserves, ten years from now, we have no reserves. So that didn't look very good to me. So, but if we'll be getting to that Tuesday, then we'll get to that Tuesday.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so I know I've got that question. You're not, you're not the only one who brought that up. So in the budget book was a very nasty-looking red line graph that showed our reserves depleting over a ten-year period. That was to show that if we do nothing, if we make no budget interventions, if we do not raise property taxes to fund our capital program, our reserves will tank by that six million dollars over a ten-year period. So it was more of a, it wasn't, hey, let's do this. It's, hey, this is what's going to happen, so let's not do it. And then on the the page afterward, it shows what the plan is. It shows the red line versus the blue line, which is what's being recommended. So we will definitely go into that on on Tuesday, but I'm not endorsing it, that we deplete the township's reserves by any means.
It was a red line for a warning and not a recommendation. Thank you for clarifying. More to come. We're okay to continue? Go ahead.
Okay. So we're pretty much at the end. Actually, I do have one other thing. So one of the items in the budget is for the recruitment of a student. This is a, this is a records management student that is updating some of our old files so that they're more easily accessible. It's it's funded through a provincial grant as well as the Township's Modernization Fund. So we are seeking pre-budget approval on this item, which has a zero impact to the tax levy, just so that we can do some recruitments. Most of the students are finding summer jobs now, so it's a good idea for us to get this one out of the way so we can fill the position if council wants the position to be filled. The other item was candidate celebrations at EECC, so that was not something that was in the EECC budget. It's extraneous to what we had planned for in our budget. So we will require a five thousand dollar increase to our property tax levy to host that event, which is half the cost estimated at ten thousand dollars. So that will bring the property tax rate from two point nine four to an even three percent. And that's all I've got. I'm happy to answer any questions council may have. I'm not sure. I'll look to our CAO on the the student recruitment, how we, if we want to get that one out of the way now.
Yes, thank you, Treasurer Boylan. The student position, so we've historically done to a Parks and a JAS student. What we are looking for is our JAS student has, what they've worked on in previous years is the Retro Reflectivity Program. That is, is taking a unit and ensuring roadside Traffic Act signs have the reflectivity, the minimum reflectivity needed to meet MTO levels. Director Sweetland could speak further too. We're looking for support from council to add one more student in in the office, which would assist with scanning and records retention and getting a lot of our records digitized and into our digital records management system. So and also supporting with summer vacations and those sorts of things. Some administration and administrative support through the summer months. So if there's any questions, either myself, Director Sweetland, or myself may be able to answer.
Thank you for that, Counselor Serna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This student that we're hiring, he's going to be out on the road or is going to be in the office?
So so through your worship, the the office student will be in the office. The JAS student is one that will have a mix of in-office data processing, but field work as well, where they where they take a unit and they've got to go sign by sign and do a measurement where, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think in in previous years, we had to rent a truck for for our student. So I'm wondering, do we have to get more vehicles for to accommodate this, or we're okay with what we got?
I will defer to Director Sweetland to answer that question. Through your worship, that's correct. In past years, last number of years, we've had to rent some vehicles due to COVID restrictions and some spatial spatial needs, likely to undertake, so the reflectivity program is required by minimum maintenance standards. So we, everybody has to do it. Typically, in the past, we've been able to use our student and consult out to the other lower tiers and provide the program on their behalf as well and bring in revenue. As everyone is aware, we have a number of signs in our township roads now, and the program is simply too big for a student to do in the number of weeks that we do get them for. So it would be the student undertaking this work for township roads, and likely the case would be for the two-to-three-week field program that a rental vehicle would be required just just for that program, for that timeline. Three to four weeks. Yeah, ish, yeah, only for the duration of that program, it would be.
So the floor is open to all questions and to any aspects of the presentation from Director Boylan. Deputy Mayor Winner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Adam, you did a really good job on that. You've done it well. You've done a lot of work, you can tell. I mean, you on efficiencies where you can find them, so. I think the next meeting will be all to get more into it and see if we can tweak it. I don't know. That looks pretty decent for now, but. Anything on the horizon you think is in the next few years going to scare us or? You want to talk about it?
I think the big item is the union collective agreement negotiation. To me, that's the big thing that stands out. We don't know what's going to happen with inflation. It's still pretty high, so I expect that to be a budget pressure for next year. Hard to say where the economy is going, but it sounds like inflation's around to stay for probably the next five years, right? So. Yeah, I I think we've got probably some difficult budgets ahead, but I think the main things we need to be looking at are reserve funding for capital, right? So. What we're making through the two thousand and twenty-three budget, that seventy thousand dollar increase, it's not fully funding our infrastructure. It's it's an acknowledgement that we're not fully funded and we have a long-term plan to tackle it, and we're just doing a piece of it this year, right? So. That amount, that recommendation could change if we get a bunch of bad prices. If we have to add projects, if something breaks down that we didn't expect to break down, that price tag could go up for us. So I think looking at that ten-year plan, making sure it's really lean and serving the objectives of council and the community is going to be important. Because that that fund in particular, that capital reserve is going to be really strapped and we've shown, I think it's two thousand and twenty-five is a really really nasty capital budget year with that Vienna Culvert project that's slated for over two point two million dollars. So tho- those are on my mind.
Thank you, and just one moment. Counselor Serna, I just wanted to add and also for additional context that this year is is almost of a, almost a status quo budget where we're not making any significant decision about new investments and new direction. We need a new strategic plan, so our current strategic plan has expired. So we need as council to go out there, talk to the community, decide what is on the horizon for the next ten years. And that will allow us to give direction to staff, which will then allow them to strategize and prioritize to present to us long-term planning and and budgets that are dealing with all the different factors, but are also, so are responsible, but also reflecting the priorities from the community. So so this year is kind of that, okay, let's just keep going. Take care of our assets, take care of our staff, take care of our constituents with as-is. And but definitely some important discussions to have this year. Counselor Serna.
Yeah, thank you. Just through you, Madam Mayor, to Adam, I want to echo Deputy Mayor Widner's comments. And I think I've saw this before on a one-on-one basis. You have done a fine job with the budget. The other thing I want to point out is you mentioned re-tendering for insurance. And and I know insurance has gone up substantially in the last five years and and to mount it, I can't understand whether that, I should have shares in your goddamn company, pardon my French, but it's gone up exponentially. So I think it's a good idea that we do do re-tender and and go from there. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? And again, this is a good time. If there are any ideas or suggestions you would like staff to explore that perhaps you didn't see in the budget explicitly, or that you would like to consider to see what's the cost or what what will be the impact on the budget so that we could consider that next Tuesday or at a follow-up meeting? This this is a good opportunity to to bring up some of these ideas we might want to consider or or decide not to. Counselor Glinsky?
Madam Mayor, I was just wondering if any thought has been given to our roads that don't need an awful lot of work, but they're in gravel right now to putting another layer of gravel on and tar and chipping them. We have done that in the past, and I haven't heard anyone say anything about this in the in the recent past. So I was just wondering if if we're looking at that at all or if that's kind of a forgotten thing now.
Director Sweetland, did you want to comment?
Yes, through your worship, that those are, that's a great point. What what our capital and maintenance program is based on right now is the road, a biannual road need study, which accounts for a like for like replacement and maintenance. So we don't have the capital convert, the gravel conversion projects on the horizon, but that would likely be a strat plan topic if we're looking to implement that program and get things turned over again and and re rethink those those ideas and build those into the long-term capital program as well. So that that's not on the horizon right now for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four capital years, but it but it could be as we move forward.
Counselor Leach.
Hi, dear worship. Adam and I had a meeting today and we discussed the possibility of using some of his amazing graphics to help explain to all our constituents what our taxes go toward and how they're, how we're allocating and spending on their behalf. And I, because they are very clear and concise and it, a picture says a thousand words.
And Counselor Leach, so this document is available obviously to to the public. Are you suggesting perhaps like another format, like almost like a?
Like on social media? So, yeah, you know, snapshots, Facebook has, you know, just that.
Different component.
Snapshot of the day kind of thing, just to explain quickly what happens with the budget, because for most it seems to be quite a mysterious process. And just a little bit of information can shed a lot of light.
Yeah, I have to agree. I'm trying to hold back with the compliments on the on the documents. Because many of you have heard me for at least the last five years to say we need, we need a better document, and I would always be shopping around all other municipalities with with, you know, some, some not being what I would look for, but some being better than what we had and always saying, I think we can do better. Because I look for a budget documents, not just with numbers, but it's a, it's a communication tool with our constituents. That's, it should instill that trust and confidence that when I pay my tax bill, I know what is, what is happening and why. So I do agree that this document does, checks all that boxes in terms of informing, educating, instilling trust, adding the transparency, it tells a story. It shows analysis, it shows the responsible, that it's reflective of some of the community comments that we had heard about, like we responded to ice breaking requests to up the service we had heard about yard waste, like expanding that service to other areas. So all of that has been considered and still being responsible to our ratepayers overall and inflation and respectful of our and responsible with our assets. So yes, job extremely well done. I I like to see a budget where on different lines, there's minuses, there's pluses, yes, but there's also minuses, which means there was thought. It wasn't an automatic carry forward, whatever the line was last year, it's the same plus two percent. I've seen that too many times in in too many budgets, and this one really showed that there was a thought on every line. So I applaud Director Boylan. I realize also that it's a team effort, so that means that all the departments, so I'm looking at the the whole management team. It re, it requires everybody to, so I'm sure you probably had to put new pressures on, I need more information, I need, so I I can see the the team effort and it really shows. So I do think that there's an opportunity to take a a large document and to take excerpts and do various kind of informative pieces. For example, even just the what you, the section on the tax shift. I know there's a lot of concern with the impact, like the new assessment, it's coming, it's coming. And what I keep hearing on the street is that if my assessment doubles, my tax payment is going to double. And we know that's not the case. It's not how it works. So it's keeping some people up at night, thinking it's almost, I don't want the new assessment to to come because so there's a lot of education to that we can do. We we play a role in that and and you did a good job in that, and I think we can repurpose that what you've created already. So I would agree with Counselor Leach. Other comments or suggestions? Deputy Mayor Widner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adam, going back to the Canada Day celebration, those numbers, is that what we paid before or did we pay? I thought it was less, but I don't know. It's been a while since we've had one again.
I couldn't say. I started with the, I mean, it's probably during the pandemic, so there were no Canada Day events during that time. This is my first one.
Yeah, I thought it was twenty-five hundred, but I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
So just as far as the agenda, I just want to clarify. So the presentation here is that that was the operating budget presentation. That was the focus, and then the next meeting will be capital budget. Okay, so as far as the agenda, the only other items we would discuss this evening would be community grants. So, okay, so just wanted to clarify that and want to go back to any other information addition, things you'd like to remove or change to what is being proposed on the operating. So keeping in mind that, as Director Boylan pointed out, there will be other meetings. So this is something that we can share further with our constituents and to see if they have suggestions and that we can bring forward at our next meeting for final sort of last chance consideration. So if there's nothing else, we, Director Boylan, go ahead.
A suggestion was made to me that I think it's rather a good one. So council's training budget is a measly four thousand. So I I poked around some of the other municipalities. They are closer to like a ten thousand. I know we've talked about counselors getting out to some of the conferences like Good Roads. There's a lot of value in attending those things, but they do eat up the training budget pretty fast. So if there's an intent for council to attend some different conferences this year, I would recommend that we increase that budget because it's it's really low as it is when we compare to the other lower tiers. So I would give that some thought.
Any comments on that? Is there interest in participating in those conferences or other, doesn't always have to be conferences. There are some workshops and different opportunities throughout the year. That's definitely something in our one oh four, that's the four, where we should always be and forever learning and paying attention to what is happening in our industry and new ways of thinking, new ways of new approaches. Any support for maybe bumping that number a little bit for this year, right? Yeah. I think it's worth considering. You know, again, staying responsible and respectful of all the other pressures that we're facing. Counselor Leach?
To fully understand the environment that we're supposed to be working within, it's valuable to have some of those training moments to be able to grasp the the full scope of the job. And when we, Adam and I spoke, the looking ahead to, you know, even this budget and future budgets, four thousand dollars does not cover anything. So even that's two people going to something, given how much registration fees are. So if we want to have a clear understanding of our scope of our role, that would be positive to have that have a bit higher amount to draw from.
So something to look at then? Do you need further direction?
Yeah, I I suppose it's it's somewhat open-ended. I think I sense there's a hesitancy among council to spend on yourselves, but I would assure you that this really is like a very low training budget for municipal council to have, so. It's a bit open-ended. I maybe we need to take in inventory of the anticipated conferences we're attending this year. Personally, I I don't think even bumping it by two thousand would be out of line. That would still keep us much lower than some of our other, the other lower tiers. So I'll toss out a number of two thousand as a starting point. But but we could go about it a different way, take an inventory, figure out what our cost may be that way. It's also a budget that hasn't been adjusted in a long time, so also inflation's kind of eaten away at it as well. So I I wouldn't hesitate to to bump that item.
I mean, best practices in learning and development for any corporations that at a minimum, you should be using, you look at one percent of your wages should be reinvested, like the equivalent of one percent should be reinvested in your learning and development. So per, you know, employee and and one percent is like considered the lowest. So yes, I don't, I don't think we're there at four thousand. So I think, yeah. So respecting the hesitancy, but also best practices somewhere in the middle. Sounds good. Anything else? Okay. So if you'd like, then we'll move on to what was in our agenda package for community grants. I'll preface, and and that's okay, Director Boylan, was there anything else? I'll preface that section on the agenda to say that our grant program also needs, it's time for a refresh and a reset. So what is the purpose of this grant? Like, we've sort of gone through approvals in the last few years in a bit of a routine approach without much scrutiny or or really just making sure that we're all on the same page as to what is the purpose in this grant? How do we make decisions on how much to allocate to whom and why? So. I think on on the, on the docket this year will be a review of this program, just to make sure that it's aligned with priorities and and it's fair and equitable. So for this year, probably be wise to, you know, continue with our status quo kind of approach for for the year that we're taking to most of our initiatives in the township. Again, we don't need to make a decision this evening. What I would like to recommend for this evening is that we look at what we received and we tell staff if, do you need more information? Do you have questions in order to make an informed decision? So that gives us again a week or so to go back to the different applicants, if you'd like, to get more information. And then we can look at a a resolution at a future meeting. So for this evening is, what else, what more would you like to know from what we see today? Director Boylan, did you want to add something to introduce that that item on the agenda?
Sure, through you. So I wrote it in the report, the way we budgeted for the grants this year is that we are funding them based on whatever their prior funding approval was. So if we're granting the requested amounts, there is a levy impact. If we, if we grant all the requests, it's a zero point two five percent increase to levy. And then we've got the item of the museum as well, which also has potential levy impacts if that's approved. But aside from that, I think the normal course here is we go through one by one and council says yea or nay, and we take it from there and then I'll compute the the impact to the levy afterward for you.
Okay, so is that the will of council to go through each or just to ask? Inquire about different applications more randomly? What would you like to do? You want to go through each? Yeah. And like I said, we don't need to arrive at a final conclusion tonight, but could be that in some cases we have questions, so. So Santa Claus parade? The request is the same as last year. There's general support. Thumbs up from Counselor Wilson. Springfield. And it is nice. It is nice to see some of the events being fully back on. So that brings us to Family Fun Day. So slightly higher than last year. General support for that. Okay. The Elmer Malahide Museum. So in the past, it's been sixty five hundred. We did receive the presentation at our last meeting for a request to increase that contribution, which goes toward their operating budget. Thoughts on that? Counselor Wilson?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Are they requesting that twenty thousand to be annual and permanent?
Director Boylan, did you want to comment?
Yes, that's my understanding. They're they currently have an annual contribution of the sixty five hundred. The proposal is to increase that to twenty thousand annually.
Counselor Serna?
As I can, Madam Mayor, but that twenty thousand would match Elmer's contribution then. Because right now I think Elmer gives twenty thousand, we give sixty five hundred. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what the that's all about, just to even things out.
We could follow up, I believe through you, Director Boylan, there was a one time request, but then an annual contribution moving forward. So maybe what we can do is move along the items and I can take some time and maybe follow up with some of the details. Unless Director Boylan, do you have some? Yeah, so so this is the annual contribution, the twenty thousand is the annual contribution that they're requesting. The one time item is the hundred and fifty thousand for the renovations to the new building. So this item's just annual operating. We normally give sixty five hundred a year. They're requesting that we bump that up to twenty thousand. Counselor Serna is correct, that would match Elmer's allocation to my recollection.
So as and as I mentioned earlier, so at this point, we have not made a decision, you know, as to whether this is a priority and warrants that significant bump this year. This could be an item that, again, we 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 consider as part of our priorities, like deciding on what is the grant program for. There are many grant programs, for example, that do not support operating budgets and in fact, operating costs are excluded from a grant. So I just want to caution ourselves, like I feel that as a council, there's a need to, A, review our overall vision and where we invest and what is important for our community. And there's a need to review our grant policy. And is it meant to exclude operating costs, which would match what a typical grant program is? So those are my my thoughts. Counselor Leach?
I am a member of council who sits on the Elmer Malahide Museum and Archive Board. And it was explained that when our elderly relatives family go into long term care, there's a fee associated with caring for them. The museum and archive are looking after our history and therefore there's a cost associated with record keeping and archiving the the past. So that is something to take into consideration. It's it's not cheap to archive and and house collections. So this is and and they, if you were at the the train exhibit this past week, it was well done and on a very short timeframe. So they do represent us very well. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly the decision, I think we were, sorry, I'll speak for myself, that it's not representative of the 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 great work that they do and how well they operate. It's personally, I feel like we don't have parameters in terms of being fair and equitable to other organizations, perhaps are not applying for operating costs. And so I feel like it requires to truly reflect a decision. So for example, at at the county, then it's not a grant item, it's a line item. Because we recognize that that's a contribution, that's that's something that we should be contributing to through the levy as opposed to a year to year grant program. So that's that's what I feel. So it is our option, we could say, let's do it this year. Keeping in mind, we're not making an annual commitment because we need to review our, so we can make it as an exception. If that's the desire of council, that's definitely our option. But certainly the status quo would not be representative of how we feel about the work or the amazing work that they do for the community, for sure. So other thoughts then? We can do status quo or a one time. Counselor Kinski?
Madam Mayor, they're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand to help with the renovations. Is that what Elmer is also providing, since they're throwing up the twenty thousand in our face that Elmer's giving in, we're not? So was Elmer giving the hundred and fifty? Because being on the cemetery board many years ago, it was like pulling teeth to get money out of Elmer to help fund some of the things that were going on there. So I wonder if Elmer's doing the the hundred and fifty.
Right, so there are two, there are two requests, right? So there's the twenty thousand for the grant for their operating costs. There's the one time request for a hundred fifty thousand. The twenty thousand is matched, well, is currently what the contribution from Elmer is. As far as the hundred fifty thousand dollar contribution from Elmer, it's it's not a cash outlet, I believe. So Director Boylan, did you want to comment more precisely?
Yeah, so I'm not from the town of Elmer, so I'm not going to speak on their behalf. But my understanding is that they once owned the building. They transferred ownership of the building to the museum. And as part of that deal, that when they they sell the old building, the hundred fifty thousand dollar proceeds from the sale of the old building will be used toward renovating the new building. So they're using sale proceeds on a building to fund the hundred fifty thousand dollar donation, whereas we would have to raise our taxes to do it. Hope that's clear.
Counselor Serna?
We haven't committed to giving one hundred and fifty thousand. It was just a request.
It's just a request.
Okay.
All of these have no commitments. Everything you're looking at today.
The hundred and fifty is not even part of this, really. It just came up in conversation. All we were talking about was bumping up the the annual contribution to the museum.
Correct? Yeah, I don't know if it was included in this document. It was in the presentation that we received at our last meeting.
Through you, Your Worship. So for councils, on page one hundred and twenty two of tonight's agenda package, it's the second last page of the agenda. Director Boylan has spoke about the hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. So there's a couple paragraphs on that.
No, this evening is not about decisions, it's about information and consideration. Asking questions, clarification, like we're doing right now. That's good. Any other comments then? Deputy Mayor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I can't see the twenty. Sometimes we ask for a business plan to prove they needed, I mean, the problem, you know, I'm not going to say they don't, but just how are they working towards making this more equitable towards themselves? Probably I could see going to, I don't know, I'd throw it up there at ten. I wonder what anybody would think of that. It could be a discussion, I guess, if we wanted to.
Not, it's just a recommendation for for today. Yeah, I would see Obederidge was wondering if that should be a resolution. So I think we could have it for a discussion this evening, just to see what the rest of council thinks. Counsel Lewis would support a bump?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd support that ten thousand, yeah. I think twenty is a jump. That's that's too much of a jump. That's I don't think the ratepayer is going to approve the cost.
Right, so it's perhaps a recognition that perhaps our contribution has been, you know, lower than what is needed. So ten is a bit arbitrary, like it's not not based on on anything specific, so. But if if we want to send a signal that we do recognize the the good work that is is being done, the the will of council. So we'll hold it at ten, just to see, let's, we can go through and then we'll see what that looks like. And then part of the the next presentation would be an update after the discussion, what's the final total? Counselor Wilson?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think jumping, going to ten is a good start. And then we can also look at what levy versus grant and get some stuff hammered out a little more on that. It's I think you're right with the grant and maybe necessarily the right portion to be allocating it towards.
Yeah, because if it is a core feature or program slash service, then yeah, we need to reflect it that way as well. Okay, so next item. And yeah, actually, before, it is a long list, so does council wish maybe for a ten minute recess before we continue? All right, let's do that. Thank you. So we'll get back to our list of grant applicants. Find my page again. So we were at Elmer Malahide Museum. The next request is from the Malahide Community Policing Committee. I will actually recommend, I won't be shy, I am on this committee. And I know that it's been a struggle. We have just just resumed meetings last November, I think, we met just a couple of times. And we're definitely in need to sort of rebuild this this committee and we reconsider its purpose and therefore what it will do and therefore what money it needs. So in light of the other increases, I would actually recommend we deny this application. I think they're okay for another year until we regroup and figure out what the activities will be and the money that will be needed moving forward. There's still a bit of money in the bank. And so just to reflect on the other increases we're trying to accommodate. Any comments on that? Objections? Knights of Columbus. Hundred dollar increase from last year. Yes, to offset the cost of the soccer field maintenance. So I think there's support within. It's a good return on investment, yes. Plamen's Association is the same as last year, so general support to renew that. As he nods, Kinsman Club of Elmer fireworks for Canada Day. Same as last year. So there's a request to support the full set of activities for Canada Day organized at the ECC. And this is in addition to that and separate and in addition to that. So that's for the Kinsman, yes. Right, so there's support, just we maintain previous grants. The Elmer East Elgin Fair. So did not apply in twenty two, received a thousand and twenty one, now it's bumped to five thousand. Comments? Counselor Lewis?
I got a little background on that. I'm Madam Mayor, through you. I don't know if we would support the increase, but I'd like to have someone come down and tell us what the increase would be for, really before we would approve it. That's what I'd ask for, just an explanation, someone to come and present their case and, yeah.
That would make sense. It is a significant increase and we did get a full presentation from the museum, for example, so that we could have the full context. So can we make a note to invite them at our next meeting? That's okay with everybody? Okay, so we'll put a hold on that one until further information. Elgin County Farm Safety. I'm seeing some thumbs up. I think that's another good return on investment and reflects our community. Springfield Cemetery Board. Same as twenty twenty two. That's a yes. Elmer Cemetery, same. And Luton Cemetery, that one is bumped by two hundred fifty. So overall, all in favor of the those requests? Okay. And then there's the Springfield Family Fun Day. So that's a separate request, right? For the, that's for the community rooms and yes. So so the other one is for that we agreed to earlier is about the event in general. This one is for the facility, use of the facilities or a community place. So there's support for that. And the same with, so South Dorchester Optimists. So then that, is that because our fees increased then that their request bumps from three thousand to four thousand? Is the calculation the same as previous year or Director Boylan, do you have a comment on that?
I'd have to review their application, which I could do, like I'll just comment that our fees didn't increase. So that doesn't seem like the culprit, but I can review their application, get back to council.
Okay, so that would be the same for the facility, because we're working on percentages. The Springfield Family Fun Day also shows an increase. So yeah, so at our next meeting, if we could just clarify, and Springfield Swans, the same, it goes from two thousand to twenty five hundred? So we'll we'll seek some clarification on on that, make sure the we all agree on the numbers. Counselor Wilson?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm not saying sign a blank check, but the swans do a lot of good way on, like they punch so far above their weight. Anything you give them is going to go way beyond what the price is. So I'd fully support anything they're up to.
For sure, all these service clubs just all go above and beyond and and that's goes without saying. So to me, it's just clarifying that if our fees are flat, what changes in the calculation? So it's just a clarification and so we can, but I I think I I hear that we're fully supportive of of what they need. Deputy Mayor Widner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And going back to St. South Dorchester Optimist, same, that's a big investment. They give so much money to the community, they pay to the food bank, there's all kinds of things. They do a lot of work. So I think it's a good investment just to support something like this. Yeah, it is. Elvis never had to.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody can hear everybody, so. Spring Brewers Softball Association, so same idea, because theirs is flat. So in principle, I think there's support for that amount. Okay. So we'll bring back a new additional information and a new tally as well as a presentation from the Elmer Fair Board. So that's the the overall conclusion for that section. Did anyone want to comment further on the museum facility grant request? Counselor Serna?
Okay. With all due respect to everybody, I don't believe as a With all due respect to everybody, I don't believe as a council that we should be taxing the ratepayers of Malahide to fund a specific project such as this. I think if, if they want to get money from Malahide residents, they should approach Malahide residents. But if Malahide donate a hundred and fifty thousand to them, then where's it all end? Next thing you know, when we go through this donation list, everybody's in one hundred and fifty thousand. And if we say no, they're going to say, well, you did it for these guys. But I don't think it's our place to raise money to donate. It's our, it's our place to raise money to service the township. And granted, they do a service, but it's not one that's, I would consider like a road or a sewer. So that's my opinion. I would not, I, I'm not going to have to support it. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a capital investment and often in grants also, like capital requests are, are not allowed. That's something that essentially, yeah, has a capital value and gains in, in value over time and yes, the, whether it's appropriate to fund it through a grant, like a municipal grant. I, I could see some, some pushback on that from our community. Anybody else wish to comment? So overall, I'm not hearing a lot of support that it's something that we can afford right now to consider. And it's not for, again, lack, lack of support for the great work they do. Okay, so any final comments then on grants? I think we're ready for the, for our next meeting in terms of the additional information that needs to come forward so we can pass a final resolution at another meeting. So probably do it in two more stages. Okay, so if there's nothing else on grants on our agenda, there's no other reports from committees, no correspondence, no other business, no bylaws. It's truly a focus on the budget. We have no closed session. There is an opportunity for delegation and an open question period from members of the public. There's, there's an opportunity for questions and I don't know if there's anyone online, Allison. Do you have any comments or questions? And if you do, no, and so just for, I don't know if you're visible to our online audience, but we do have a couple of members of the public in, in attendance. There's no obligation to, to ask, it's just, I just want to make sure you have the opportunity if you wish. And, and there's a microphone at the, at the podium, if you'd like. It's optional. So you just have to, you, you just have to begin with your name.
Thank you, Susan Morrell. Just a comment that I appreciate very much, seeing the budget document. I do want to add my thanks for such a thorough review and a great summary. So thank you to the treasurer, is that correct? Adam, that I, I think it was wonderfully laid out and a lot of information. And I certainly do need to look at it a little more thoroughly. And I do appreciate council and their consideration for for tax increase and keeping things reasonable for the taxpayers of Malahide. So I think you're, you're doing a great job, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and we, we appreciate your engagement and your willingness to, to look at this and give us feedback. It's, it's appreciated. Okay, so if there are no other delegation and no, no other business from any members of council, so we'll go with confirmatory bylaw.
The bylaw number twenty-three dash seventeen being a by, confirmatory bylaw, be given first, second, and third readings and be properly signed and sealed.
Mover and seconder. Serna, Lewis, all in favor? Carrie. And adjournment.
That the council adjourns special meeting at nine sixteen PM to meet again for the second special meeting on March seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM.
Mover and seconder, Widner, Glinsky, all in favor? Carrie. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. To be continued.